Is Mark not coming?
Yes, I'm up.
I don't know. I didn't talk.
I can text him.
We're missing the Mark and Josh.
Josh is out of country, so.
Oh.
Josh should be here.
He has a good reason.
He's in Warham Clarks right now, Bonnie.
That's a good reason.
Yeah.
That's a very good reason.
All right, we are.
We're ready to begin. Everybody, attention please. Welcome to the Towns of Camden and Lincolnville Select Boards Workshop, February 7th, 2022. The meeting is on YouTube, correct? And also is there is a webinar link that's on the agenda that is in, it can be found on the Town of Camden website for the Select Board, the Select Board packets for this date. With that, before we do this, to start, just a quick introduction, just in case. Dave, we'll start with you.
Sure. Dave Kenny, Town Administrator from the Town of Lincolnville. Currently Vice Chair, Town of Lincolnville.
Bailey Dunn, Chair, Lincolnville.
Jordan Barnett Parker, Selectman, Select Person.
I'm a select person for Camden, right? Select person, like, or members? Select Board members?
Select Board members, sounds like.
I have the power.
Well, chair, chair of the Select Board.
Audrey Keeler, Camden Town Manager.
Allison McKellar, Vice Chair, Camden Select Board.
And Michael Ray, Lincolnville Select Board.
Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, we'll edit our agenda. The first item on the agenda, this workshop, and again, this is a workshop, not a Select Board meeting, also to track you fairly early. The first item is a special of the recent planned capital improvements to the East and West Dams, I believe. That is in, there are those potential renovation fixes are in the packet. I believe this one was really drawn by Lincolnville, one who discussed this. And so, David, you want to lead this discussion?
Well, well, I mean, without throwing it back in your lap, I think, I think really, what, rather than getting into whatever you guys are talking in-house in your municipality, you know, whether we want the chicken or the egg, really what were the historic practice of Lincolnville contributing to the care and maintenance of the dams? And the, let's call it, changing of the structures around the governance of how those monies are allocated and decisions are made. Hence this meeting. So, not to basically jump down to the end of the agenda, but I would say if you guys in Camden feel that these conversations are relevant to any sort of discussion regarding policy? And how we jointly, if Camden is interested in receiving funds from Lincolnville, what mechanisms, what mechanisms are we going to apply? In order to make that happen?
Sure. Maybe we'll start with, what has been the historical of history of this share of the cost of the dam?
I mean, it's, it's in the packet, but I mean, I would definitely defer to Dave because he's been, he's been involved this much longer than I have.
Sorry, Dave.
That's okay. As I understand it, Camden acquired the dams through town meeting vote back in the eighties? And promptly put together a McGonagall Dam Committee? Which since that time has included representatives from, obviously from the Town of Camden, but also included representatives from the Town of Lincolnville? And historically, the towns have split the maintenance costs of those dams on a two-thirds, one-third basis. Camden, thank you, two-thirds. Thank you, Bill, one-third. And too many years ago now, eighteen, I arrived and was appointed to the Dam Committee, not knowing a whole lot about it. I think my predecessors, they had been on there. And typically, we had met, we being McGonagall Dam Committee in, in honor of all this time of year, when budgets were being prepared. That time, Ken Bailey was the dam agent. And the group would sit around and talk about what needed to be done, what could be done, what should be done? What the dam agent's cost would be. The group would then make a recommendation and went forward to either the Camden Budget Committee or Camden Selectman, not really knowing even their entire process here. And we've go back to Lincolnville knowing what a one-third share of that cost would be. We budgeted for that for, at one point, long ago, they had a engineering study done. And I believe it was in response to a Maine Emergency Management Agency inspection of the dams that said, oh, you know, this happens, you need to do this and budget, big money. And the towns thought that was a little excessive, so they engaged an outside consultant to look at, do the inspection. And that group, the Dam Committee, made recommendations to the Camden Select Board about water levels in McGonagall Lake? So that the maximum enjoyment of the lake, I think primarily. Because when it was owned and controlled by the mills, when the mills needed power, they drew water. And it didn't matter what anybody upstream was doing or enjoying. And the thought being for, primarily for spring flood control, the water level was higher in the summer, allowing a certain certain flow down through town throughout the year. And then in the fall, the water got drawn down, so that if you had fall rains? Or when ice set in? And snow back, when come spring, when all that decided to melt, you wouldn't be inundated in town. And then as that melted, it allowed the water to, you know, speak its level. Ongoing. So that's kind of a brief overview of how, how things occurred or didn't occur. We two towns kind of got away from that with one of Audrey's predecessors. And town managers, we stopped having meetings for whatever reason.
You stopped having meetings between who?
Between of the Dam Committee.
Okay.
And nobody ever came forward with some budgets. And then, oh, well, Roberta Smith came back as Town Manager for an interim basis? And said, we've got some outstanding costs for the dam agents, some other things that weren't billed for the last couple of years to Lincolnville. Send us a bill. And she did, and we paid it.
Was that based on two-thirds, one-third?
Yeah. I believe so. Or I don't have any information that would lead me to believe anything differently. And I'm not even sure, it's probably been since two thousand, I think, two thousand nineteen, since we've had a Dam Committee meeting. Don't even know if it exists still, to be honest with you, to this day. And we, the Town of Lincolnville, haven't paid you any money for dam aging or maintenance or upkeep? Or anything for a couple of years, not knowing
what's coming.
What's coming, tired for plan, pay for bill, when you haven't contributed and that type of conversation. So I think that's what prompted former Selectmen Barrows to have a conversation with the board about, gee, shouldn't we have some dialogue with the folks in Camden about what's coming? Dave Bolstridge came to a meeting in Lincolnville, probably three years ago now? Just off the top of my head, to say we might do something big or bigger for repair at the dams. And then everybody said, well, before we commit ourselves to what might be, you know, six figures? On a policy that was adopted in the eighties? We're gonna have a conversation about how these decisions get made, since the Dam Committee will be there. Is that long enough? Should I not?
Yes.
Too much?
No, no. And for me, it's super informative, because I'm the newest one here.
But it sounds fundamentally that just to, Lincolnville doesn't feel, it has information on what may be forthcoming on terms of the dam. I can't say that I can summarize it for you, right? All the notes in the packet itself. Not wearing, personally, I mean, we're a six-figure kind of.
Well, I mean, we did, we did have one that we paid for, and was it twenty nineteen or twenty twenty for the West Dam?
The West Dam.
That was a six-figure repair, and it just came to a point where we couldn't, we couldn't hold off on it.
And we just did it.
Yes.
Yes. Well, it seems to me, Councilor.
So I went back and read all of the old Kim and Harold articles from when the McGonagall Watershed Association gave the dams to Camden? And the Select Board meetings in both Camden and Lincolnville? And it was interesting, because I mean, really, there was, there was never a town meeting vote that said, okay, well, Lincolnville's gonna pay a third of the cost, and Camden's gonna pay two-thirds. It was always, you know, Camden was gonna take the dams on, and because there were so many problems at that time with the water levels, with being controlled by, you know, a private company, everybody was really supportive of having a town, any town, take them over. And I think at, at that point, you know, Lincolnville said, and Lincolnville residents came and spoke, and Camden residents, everybody was supportive of it, and it was sort of the understanding that, yeah, this is gonna be a shared thing. But it never was sort of codified and made like binding. It was always just a, kind of like a handshake agreement between the Select Boards at the time. And so, it seems like since then, it's been a lot of, you know, there's been a committee. Camden has, you know, acquired two additional dams since then. And so, the, you know, the, the committee meetings would then turn into sort of this, like awkward thing, some with Lincolnville members being like, okay, well, we're gonna leave now, because it's, we're not gonna, we have nothing to do with the Seabright Dam or the Montgomery Dam. And it was mostly kind of like about water levels and what needed to be done to keep the water levels. But it had, it, it seemed like Ken Bailey was kind of the guardian of so much of this knowledge that the, you know, the Dam Committee would kind of just go over, I read through a lot of their minutes too, you know, a lot of his recommendations, and he kind of had it taken care of a little bit. Since the Select Words didn't really get that involved, so it's been a really long time since the, you know, the Select Words have actually talked about, okay, well, what are the, what are the goals? What are the challenges? What are our, you know, opportunities to work together? We have all these flooding problems in Camden, and you have all that water, and Lincolnville, they keep sending us. You know, things, things like that, there've been, there are a lot of new laws with the safety stuff for the dams too. And so, I've been looking forward to this for a long time, because there's like, we, we really should be working together and thinking about sort of what, you know, what are the goals? What are the concerns? What are the, you know, if there, if there are grants that could help us pay for any of these things too? Like, is that something that Camden and Lincolnville should do together? Does it? Should we just gift the dams to Lincolnville, maybe? And you guys could just, you guys got the West Dam, we'll marry Christian. This whole idea of gifting the dams isn't interesting. So anyway, I, I'm, I think it's like sort of long overdue that the Select Words get together and talk about what the goals are, figure out, does a committee still make sense? What should be delegated to committees? What's, you know, staff person? What should the Select Word be deciding? If you go too long, just having an outside committee do things, it's, I think everybody loses track a little bit of like, why are we even doing this?
It seems like fundamentally, both towns are interested in what happens with the East and West Dams for lots of reasons, lake level, especially in view of the forecast of someday having a fifty or hundred-year storm. It's gonna cause some issues, you have to get on quickly in terms of lake levels, kind of things we'll be facing in the future. But I guess, I'm just confused as to why this Dam Committee disbanded or just didn't meet the same thing. You know, it just seemed to have gone away. And it seems to me that the first thing starts with communication between the two towns about what the expectations are for those two dams. And, and, and best place to do that is to be in committee. To, that's a good thing, committee. Well, I mean, I, I mean, somebody, somebody has to assist through the, you know, Dave Bolstridge or whoever, or whoever, technical engineers, as to what, what they seem to be doing, which required to be done by inspections also. But I'm, you know, I, this is, this is, to me, it's, well, to me personally, it's frustrating, but that a lot of things done by, by board, you know, ten or twenty years ago, I get that.
Forty.
Yeah, yeah, forty years ago. And, and it doesn't mean they were back, you know, it doesn't mean that they, I think, Lincolnville wants to know what it's, if, if anything, it's facing in terms of financial risk. And, and so is Camden, of course. But I, I think it starts with, you know, you know, if, if there's an interest in the two towns, you know, communicating, it starts there.
Well, I guess, you know, so my observation of the, I think there were three Dam Committee meetings when I started, and sort of my observation of that was a lot of it was about the capital expenses that were, you know, coming down the line for all four dams for Camden? And then the, the two that Lincolnville works with us on. And we had such huge issues and investment that needed to be made into the Seabright Dam? That that ate up a lot of the conversation with the Dam Committee, just sort of explaining those repairs. And, you know, we, similar, it was a spreadsheet that looked almost exactly like the one in the packet that was presented, and, you know, East and West were in there, and, you know, six-figure repairs for both of them that we knew were imminent within, yes, within the next five years. But the, the issue that I saw was that yes, that information was presented to the committee, but then we needed to present it again to Budget Committee, and then the Select Board needed to understand it. So it wasn't, it was just, it was just very inefficient, given where we were at that point in time. It wasn't about policy, really, it was about finances and capital expenditure and prioritization and that sort of thing. So I think that that's kind of why it ended up languishing a little bit, because it wasn't a pure policy discussion. It was the, the finances around how do we do what and when, and what's most appropriate, and, you know.
But the only two dams that, correct me, the only two dams that Lincolnville's involved with thus financially, who has been struggling, is that East and West. They don't get involved in Seabright, and that means that, you know.
No, and I guess my point being, you know, that's, that is a, you know, it's a, it's a large effort to commit to time to be on that sort of committee and to have, you know, I'd say, an hour taken up by the Seabright Dam repairs.
Exactly.
It was wonderful, they, they, the Lincolnville people humored us, but, you know, I can understand.
And that was, and my statement was based on my.
There was a free spot of attendance, too.
Right, I was thinking, the Dam Committee with us, boys and girls on it, was just East and West. Because that's the one that Lincolnville's interested in.
Yeah. Traditionally, and I just follow the lead of the people that had been there on that committee before me.
Yeah.
Is fortunately, the discussion usually surrounded the East and West Dams to start the meeting. And then, I can, we were in this room, I can see Ernie Littlefield and George Winslow saying, okay, thanks! And they'd get up and, that was my ride home, and that way we go.
There needs to be a separation for the dams, in terms of the East-West with Lincolnville.
I mean, I, I don't know, because I, I feel like this is part of why this discussion is so important?
Yeah.
Is figuring out, you know, how do we view this as an entire system? Because things that do happen in, in Lincolnville impact Camden. And I think, you know, Lincolnville has a really great model for how you manage sort of watershed issues in another, I think it's the Coleman Pond and the Duck Trap Watershed. And I think that's the kind of conversation that we should be having, you know, you were really successful in that project? And that's kind of the whole purpose of the watershed restoration study that we did, is to look at, are there opportunities like that in Camden? And how do we work together on them? So I think that's great that we're having this conversation now, it's really timely. And there's more opportunities for those sorts of collaborations than there ever happened before, because, you know, there's more federal funding for those sorts of projects. And, you know, there are things that I think, you know, issues that you read about in the newspaper in Lincolnville that, you know, should we work together and support each other on, you know, maybe a culvert replacement in Lincolnville that would be beneficial for, for you folks, but also it helps us as well? So I think it's kind of all those things that it's, it's just good for us to start looking at and talking about.
I mean, if you look at like, for example, there, the, I don't know if you're familiar with the culvert replacement that they did on, was it Slap City? So they applied for a street, it was actually, I think, a Camden resident that got really involved in that. Dan Daly was, and Travis Lemon, and so they had flooding problems on one of their roads. They also had fish passage problems. And so because they alloyed passage was blocked by this culvert, they also had flooding problems. So they were able to get a bunch of funding to fix their culvert problem. But the only reason that they were eligible for that funding was because there was a habitat restoration opportunity as well. So, because the Coleman Pond and Duck Trap River watershed, that has, you know, if there were a bunch of dams on the Duck Trap River that prevented sea run fish from getting up there, they wouldn't have been able to get funding for that culvert replacement project. And so, there are a lot of things now, when you look at like Martin Corner, for instance, that has culverts and things wash out. If there, if every time one of those culverts need to be replaced, if there were an opportunity to say that this is also gonna be beneficial to sea run fish, then you just can check another box in terms of like a big pool of funding. So, you know, it's been Lincolnville residents that have said things to me several times about, like, hey, Camden, and your dams are ruining our, you know, our trout fishery, for instance. Because, you know, the trout, and the, you've got all these beautiful cold water streams out in Lincolnville, and the land over Camden dams, and we can't get back. So it is a cool opportunity to, if there's interest, to look further.
Yeah, well, I mean, I feel, again, like, I, there, this is clearly rich fertile ground upon which a lot of conversations can spring. But I think Allison and Audra, you hit it on the head, and as David said, you know, there's allusions to all of these agreements that were faithfully committed to as best they could, given that, you know, there's no real structure. And, you know, the, the big flags that started popping up for Lincolnville, because we were just sort of going along with the senior committee members and the historic knowledge and the fact that Ken Bailey was still with us and you know, just coasting basically on precedent. And so when we had that gap in getting a bill from Camden, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but it was we got a bill for a couple of years, you know, there, I think, folks were rightfully trying to bring everything into good working order. But, you know, getting a bill like that all of a sudden with no other communication, and it's just sort of like, huh!
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, and then moving, you know, moving forward, it's like, but we're not, we tried to get together our Dam Committee members to come together and give us updates of what was going on. You know, we really wanted to get a real-time idea of what was happening. And when we were just coming up short over and over and over again, in terms of, you know, we're gonna go to our taxpayers and ask, ask for X number of dollars? And we have nothing to rely on in terms of the how and the why and the wherefore. And so, getting some sort of, like, getting, starting a process to establish policy, and whether it's don't kick me, I'm gonna kick myself later, but whether it's an ordinance or some, something to that effect, that I know, I, or similar? Or, or similar, but something that we can rely on and, and with regularity, check that in with? And it, we hold accountable to it, and it can hold us accountable.
Other than fact, but those bills came over the trenches, again, they were just East-West Dam repairs.
Correct. Well, we actually had no, there's, yes, presumably based on.
As far as you knew.
Yeah, as far as me.
And the two levels of things going down, Allison, you bring up the watershed, absolutely, our issues are all over the thing. But the, the main, the core issue, if I hear from Lincolnville, this item is the repairs to the East and West Dam. That is, that is succinct.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and I guess that this is the way that, you know, certainly Camden, we need to think about it. So around the time that we sort of committed to this more broader, long-term planning, we were faced with the reality of infrastructure that was just at the end of its usable life. So unfortunately, we've had to spend a ton of money doing just, you know, repairs to high-hazard dams that are required to keep them safe. That's really, really expensive.
I mean, yeah, just, it went all that, you know, we got the dams, and then they were in pretty good shape when we got them. But they're old and just getting older all the time. So basically, it's just we, we hit the wall of all, Lincolnville hadn't gotten a bunch of bills in the past, and it was all like, okay, well, you know, this general cost, you know, seven thousand dollars or something, and it was all going well. And then we kind of felt the same way that you guys did when, when we got the bills. It was like, well, hold on, why are we gonna put a bunch of, we're gonna put a bunch of money into this kind of emergency repair? Same thing with the Seabright Dam, it was like, all of a sudden, oh, we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that turned into three hundred thousand dollars. And we're like, we don't even, we haven't even really assessed whether they're, like, should the dam be completely rebuilt? Or should, but since it was like this reactive planning, what we're doing is we're fixing an I-beam for a hundred thousand dollars? When maybe what we need to be doing is like completely rebuilding the, the gate on the East Dam. For instance, right now, we sometimes can't let out enough water fast enough. You've probably seen the water start rising there. And so the concern is that we're doing these things reactively and missing opportunities to maybe completely rebuild or.
Yeah, and so I, I mean, and I understand that's, it's been a frustration of ours, and I, and I'm certain even more so in Lincolnville with things like the, you know, the West Dam, where, you know, we really would, would like some more time to do that planning. But because it's high-hazard and we had no choice, it's.
Okay, do it.
But it's really just a courtesy, and Lincolnville is under, I mean, I don't wanna emphasize, it's not great for Camden to emphasize this, but your contribution to all of this from the beginning has been a, a courtesy. And it's based on if Lincolnville, right? If the Lincolnville Select Board has to get to the point where they feel like they're informed enough that they're gonna ask taxpayers for this? And so, I mean, that's on us, and on you guys, you know, you're under no obligation to do it when you don't feel comfortable with it. So it's good that we're, you know, the more we talk, the more comfortable everybody will feel about it.
Sorry.
Well, and I think we're going a little bit round and round, but I think the crux of this is that we are environmentally partnered. And so whether we're obligated by good faith or handshake or not, the fact is, is that we should be involved in the process, because it's, it's all good to say, oh, you know, you're not really obligated to do it. But then to be sprung, you know, it, to be taken out of the process completely, I just don't think. And this isn't putting blame anywhere, but, I mean, moving forward, there should just be a scenario where there's a committee, there are rules, there are understandings, there is an information that's being held by one person, because they're the person as great as Ken Bailey was, you know, this, there should be information that's coveted and available to everyone. It can be researched and can be accessed. And, you know, if one person goes away, that doesn't mean that everything goes away for the last thirty years. I just think it needs to be gone forward, going forward, logistically in a very organized and thought-out way, so that when you do have emergencies, that we can be a part of that discussion, whether it's a good faith requirement for us to pay or not. Because as you said, maybe there's something on our end that can be done. Maybe there's something that can mitigate the overall cost to both towns, or to your town, or to our town. And it, it has to just be done together in a cohesive type of way.
And then more cooperation.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, again, it seems to me that there's still two levels, one higher level with restoration dams and all, and they, they play together. But the, the core of what this problem or challenge that Lincolnville carries is, is just wanna know what's coming down the pipe? And wanna be involved in what's coming down the pipe. And it seems to me that, that we need to have some, some kind of a working sessions with Lincolnville on those two dams physically only. If the gate is suggested to be replaced, it's a physical thing, it's nothing to do with the, necessarily with the, with the watershed.
Well, there's, it depends partially on what the goals are. So what is, what do people want the water level to be? What's acceptable? What's not? What's the best thing? We get messages from, from Lincolnville on a regular basis with conflicting ideas. Everybody has an opinion about what the water level on McGonagall Lake, North Pond should be. And sometimes even on the same day, we'll get comments from people who think the water level is both too high and too low.
Well, are these private citizens or these town officials?
Private citizens.
Okay, because that's, I just want to differentiate. Okay, because that's, I just want to differentiate, because to me, there's a huge difference between someone from the select board or a town administrator. Reaching out to you guys and saying there's a problem with the water level, rather than somebody who is on a lake enjoying it in a boat saying, I'd like.
Oh, I'm not blaming or anything.
No, 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 I just mean for me and my own absorption, it's a completely different thing to me.
Like what's best, we haven't had a conversation at the high level recently about what is best. The, you know, are do these guidelines that were established however many years ago, does that, is this still what's best for the wounds at this time of year, is this still what's best? You know, at this time of year, so if we could, you know, if the water level were lower all the time. That would mitigate some of the need to be able to let water out faster when. You know, at at some point, the dam control agent and that job is quite a big job, and it's been taken on as a little stipend. Job with our our wastewater superintendent, who we really need to be doing like other things, like keeping wastewater at the harbor. Um, you know, if there's gonna, if there needs to be more communication and more planning and all of that, that. Is gonna be a job that needs to be paid more, for instance, so. Sometimes you have to decide, are we gonna flood flood the lake, or are we gonna flood downtown Camden?
How that relates to whether or not you're placing the gate or not, that's a physical repair that has to be done. That's the one that we, Lincolnville currently sharing costs on or have been sharing costs on. And that, I'm actually missing something, this in my mind, that's, that's on the spreadsheet, there are repairs to use in question with being. And and what they are for is not about controlling the lake level, it's about having.
Yeah, but the size of the gate has to do, so, so these are just status quo repairs to maintain things the way they are. If you want to get it to the point where um it's, anything is automated, for instance, or it's.
Or maybe we don't have two gates that we're adjusting and it's just one, or yeah, all these sorts of decisions.
Like the West Dam maybe should just stay closed all the time and we don't control the level of what the East Dam.
But, so I I I think I'm confusing confused, and I may repeat what you just said, and I apologize. Um, but we're we're already talking of details where we don't have rules of engagement, right? And and basically, that's what we need to establish is, do we want a new committee, do we want to revise the rules, who do we want on the committee? What is the scope of the committee, that kind of things, before we dig into. Details where we don't even have a decision making process at this stage to make those decisions. So is is this what we're trying to? I mean, all of the those topics are super critical, and I understand, I I agree with you, but it seems to me that. It's like we're playing a game, and it's not a game, but we're we're without knowing the rules, so I would love it if we could focus on. How do we want to organize the communication, the committee, the decision making process?
We have to know what the purpose is a little bit, though, because sometimes it's been in the past, it's just been like this water level committee. You had one representative from the lake and one representative from the, you know, the seabright portion of the river. And then somebody right below it, and they would all say, we want the level this like this, and we want the level like this, and. I think there's an opportunity now, do we want it just to stay like very narrow in scope? Or do we want a committee that would be more like watershed level planning?
I think that you have to start somewhere, you have to start somewhere, this is, this sounds like a mega. I totally agree, the whole watershed is huge, and has to be, has to, that's a high level focus, but it seems to me with the list of. We just have them, six hundred thousand dollars in the West End, was it?
No, 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 that was a like a hundred thousand.
Yeah, that had to happen, tho- tho- those those things we need to fix, it's, it's a start somewhere. And then you can expand and decide what you want to do, just hit the very important issues of. Lake level and and some things that may may dictate changing out West East Dam, making it one dam. Or those things longer term, those aren't gonna happen tomorrow.
But but there are items that we need to jointly decide on, and then there's items where we need to inform. Lincolnville of what we're thinking, what we're doing, so I think there's different levels of engagement that we need to establish.
That is, that's what I wanted to add to to this. Camden is now because of, because of time and and how it has evolved, Camden, how I see it is. Dealing with multiple dams, and they're all on this list on a regular basis, and when you have a dam. Committee meeting or dam conversation, it's in a, it all in a nutshell. Yes, Lincolnville needs to be involved, or we want to be involved with the two that affect us dearly. Um, so there's a level of conversation that needs to be had. By both towns, although I'm wondering after listening to this, if there's a little bit more. Of other dams that might affect these two dams, and maybe. Our participation in this committee needs to be more than the half hour you're talking about the the East and West. I think the participation may need to be a little bit more. May maybe not monetarily, but what is actually affected yet, so I think we need to define. What we need for a committee, how it needs to perform, what we're looking for for information, and then. You decide your levels of communication with with the, within the town, not with the town, within the town.
I I think that, well, that's gonna, some of that's gonna evolve, I think. But you're right, we should start off with a basic, is this just a. A capital improvement, you know, to East and West Dam Committee only versus something more, and that's, that's the virgin, I agree. Yeah, I I get, but we have to start somewhere, and to me, we have pending potential repairs to those two dams that we're looking at. I I suggest that the start would be just taking a a small group, taking just a look at those only.
I I think that probably, I to make a suggestion, the governance structure around how you do this, because like you said, it's been a. It's been sort of a handshake agreement for a long time, so maybe, maybe what all, just a suggestion again, you'd like to task. David and I with the skeleton of an interlocal agreement. Um, and then, you know, kind of figuring out what what do you all want in there? Like, how do we kind of set that up, and then what are the policy goals that you want sort of, you know, included in that agreement, so that. You know, there is some focus around it, as to, you know, what sort of decisions are jointly being, how that happens.
Is that the local agreement, East and West Dam only, or a big part of that?
Well, that's, that's kind of the decision. You're gonna need, well, and I mean, you'll have to give us direction on that, because we're just here to help you. Get to where you want to get in terms of the policy goals.
You mean an interlocal agreement where it would go out to voters and it would quantify percentages of obligating Lincolnville to a percentage of.
Again, I'm just saying that this is, this is, we're just, I'm just throwing out a suggestion of what we could do to help you get there in terms of your. Shared policy goals, so.
Well, it's because, so so what you're suggesting right now is not an interlocal agreement with a capital I and capital L that is binding on both parties so much. That's just a way that we, two towns can cooperate, find a structure.
I'd say if that's, if that's what all of you want, absolutely.
Maybe the local agreement is is legal agreement.
Yeah, but it just.
It just basically comes down to like, we're tasked in Lincolnville to spending other people's money, right? That's like, if you want to make our job as crude as possible, and my feeling is, is that I don't want to send any money. To any other community without having some. Some very defined and mutually agreed upon mechanism by which those monies are allocated. Either within our community or outside of our community, and so whether we want to use some legal instrument like. An ordinance or an interlocal agreement, or whether it are just policies that we both. Agree to revisit annually or biannually, I don't. They, there has to be some kind of structure that requires us. At some level to meet with some regularity, so that we can employ our mutual mechanisms for.
Allocating funds.
Yeah.
Well, during your idea, what do you, what do you and Dave need from us now to to get you in the path, this is gonna be a process, I'm sure. Well, I mean, it's it's a big topic and we're not gonna solve it all here, but what what do we need, where do we start, what do we need?
I mean, I guess it's, you know, how how specific or how general do you want it to be at this point, and what it. What it's sort of asking everyone to commit to, that's probably the most important thing we need to know at this stage.
Do you guys vote on it in your, when the, the money that you send to. Us, for lack of better phrasing, is that like a separate warrant article at town meeting for you guys, or has that worked into your budget?
It hasn't been. In the last twenty years, se- at least, a separate article, I think when it first started, there was a clear. You know, sort of like I said, or East and West Dam, whatever, you know, I think the first one was like seven hundred dollars or something.
Right, it was like, yeah, that.
More more recently, it's been part of our. Probably a public works other, so it's locked, it it's been locked in with other things, I mean, it's clear in the budget. Where it, where the money is intended, but it isn't voted on in a separate article, it's combined with other expenses. And I think that part of the uh concern on our end the last couple of years was. And this is just a wild, you know, exaggeration, let's say Camden, the Select Board decided they're gonna replace the West Dam. And the cost was two million dollars, and okay, Lincolnville, we need your, you know, six hundred sixty six thousand. Six hundred sixty six dollars now, um, the Select Board obviously hadn't budgeted for that, hadn't, and. Obviously not planned for, and really couldn't um obligate the town through policy to to. To a third of the cost that you fo- folks decided. And therein was part of the concern of, you know, it's. If it's a thousand dollars to contribute to the damage and cost, you know, that we budgeted for and planned for and whatever else, but. If somebody, not to say you do it, but if somebody decided that that was what it was gonna be, and then, you know, here comes a bill for. Six hundred thousand, and I picked up off the floor.
Yeah.
We'd be like, how do we pay for this?
Right, Hope doesn't pay anything, in fact, it was interesting to see the newspaper articles, Hope was like, nope, we want no part of this.
Should really focus on, again, I remember it too simplistic, that's inherently, but um, the 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 first item would be. Normal ongoing repairs to the dam, these two westerns that have to occur to maintain the status quo. Just to, if the gate is stuck and has to be fixed, it has to be fixed, um, but the second part of the document can be. The longer range planning part, the part about what we can do collectively in our towns. To make the watershed better for from each of both towns, there there's two levels that I see in this document. Um, um, one is more immediate, because logically, the ones that it might get working the fastest. Might be the ones that are on the list for repairs of these two west dams. Um, East and West Dams, but to the point you made about the the watershed, there could be some downstream. Bigger planning going on, in discussion collectively with Lincolnville, and and whoever else, it has to be involved.
Um, I think, sitting here recognizing that there's a willingness between the elected people in Camden and the elected people in Lincolnville. Um, and other suggestion of us kind of working to create a skeleton could simply be. A series of questions that we need to ask of both boards to see where there's commonality and where there's differences. To try to flesh out some of the policy decisions, and then, once we have some of the policy, we can work on the structure of actually how that would occur. Um, that just, it seems like getting the questions together to give to the boards might be a good.
Um, yeah.
A good starting point.
Yeah, from what I've heard, it sounds like, you know, there's sort of the the joint decision making process. And I think that's something, you know, David and I can take a crack at, you know, coming up with something that. Can be workshopped again amongst all of you, as well as what do we mutually agree upon as being operations and maintenance? That we can sort of, on an annual basis, agree that that's going to be something that. That we share in some fashion or another, and then also, you know, I think probably this goes back to the joint decision making process, but. Really figuring out the long range capital planning and. All that kind of, I mean, that's gonna be a much bigger conversation, but I think that those seem, from listening to all of you, like the. You know, the major things that we can work on, to give you some sort of framework to come back and really hash a lot of this stuff out.
Well, will that also address the um, or contemplate addressing the dam committees?
Well, I think that that goes to the joint decision making process and how that's structured.
Well, what I'm really saying is, I'm looking at agenda one, three, and five, seem to be all up together. And we're talking about the capital improvement, saying we're talking about the committees, and we're talking about future decisions regarding dancing cushion. Um, although I think five has a short term and a long term piece to it, um, short term meaning repairs. And long term meaning, maybe we could smartly get something else.
Strategizing, I mean, that's something that should be done together, you know, when there's informative studies that were all involved in it, then we can make.
But you just need, just those, I call them long with term analyses that take a little bit more bite, because they could also be more aggressive.
But also, if you have like multiple towns working together, it could be beneficial to get grants or funding. I'm assuming that pooling resources goes both ways.
Especially the long term. But the long term, what I call the long term plan, but absolutely, there's a lot of money out there to do stuff like this, and. We've both been successful, we're trying to find that as soon as we can. But I think that makes sense, Allison.
I mean, the other thing in terms of like, I would be hesitant to jump right into a doubling down on the, you know, the dam committee. Because I wonder if, like, I noticed Lincolnville has a lakes and ponds committee, for instance, um, and. That's always seemed a little bit interesting, like in Camden, we've separated, like, we've had the dam committee, and then we've had the conservation commission, and we've had like. Water quality efforts over here, and then we have our, the discussion that happens with the lake warden and how. You know, Inland Harbor Masters, and then we have moorings, um, you know, some of these things come to each of us. Like, a- as issues, and would it make sense to kind of try to look at? Like, okay, well, what are the, what are our goals at the lake, what are the water quality issues, what are the mooring issues, what are the, um. Like, I don't know what you guys do, for, do you guys appoint a lake warden? A member of Harbor Master, or, um, it just is, you know, the idea that there's like a line that goes right down the middle of the lake is kind of silly. Um, because it's not noticeable when you're out there, and just is there a desire to try, you know, which things, which parts of the conversation? Would be better combined and which can be kept separate, so just.
Well, I just, it's interesting to me, and it's my first meeting with everyone, but it it seems like that. For some reason, there's a tendency to be separating all these things, when it seems to me that everything is interlocked, so. Instead of thinking it in the in the view of, oh, this is just a dam committee, I would think that. Anything in the purview of a shared water system between the two towns, it's probably something we should all be getting together to talk about, instead of trying to. Separate, there's the dam, and then there's the water level, or this, this, and you know, I mean, if we have bodies of water that we share together. It's my belief, and I can only speak for myself, that these are things that should be discussed together. Instead of anything being done unilaterally, so to me, I don't see them as separate issues, in fact, I see them as all one issue. That works together and in one environment, so that's how I think that things should be dealt with, instead of having to split them up into all these different. Committees or boards or whatever, I mean, there's just, we deal with these issues as they are between Camden and Lincolnville and our shared water system. And whether it's the dam or something else that relate to that, I don't see a need to separate them, I'm.
Like, the McGonagall Watershed Association has historically, always had one representative on the dam committee. Too, I mean, maybe it's worth a conversation with them to say, you know, what role do they, I know there's a new um director now, you know, what role do they. See themselves wanting to play and, you know, larger watershed planning or.
I I think the only thing I was referring to, not not ignoring any of these items are very important together, is that that this document should have. A a aggressive process for handling capital improvements as one item, that's a process that would be probably easier to sketch out initially. But there should also be a process that addresses more macroscopic issues on the watershed that we share on the, on the, on the lake. Uh, that we can share, uh, including the park fall and all these other things, like, there's no reason why those can't be discussed in this. This this grouping, and that is a challenge to put together a committee, you know, now. Uh, it can be a real challenge, we have to be, that's what they and Audra contemplate. That part, to make it effective and and useful and functional. That part, to make it effective and useful and functional. But it should be part of the, you know, the document, whatever, whatever time we want to give it.
With decision model processes, like, for that type of. Issue, the decision model will be X, because that's gonna help also.
Yeah.
Streamline those processes and.
Yeah.
And be clear on how we make those decisions.
Anything else, Dave, Bob, do you need from the sub- best group here?
I mean, I, I think if you get too into the weeds now, it'll, it's gonna be too difficult. But Dave, can you think of anything else that would be helpful to us?
I think our plate's full. Not just. Do you still have? Or is that just not populated at the moment? I mean, we haven't appointed anybody from Lincolnville for a couple of years, and I think.
Pending a conversation.
Yeah, I think, I think ours are now all turned out, sure.
But it's, it's the same.
Same, you still have the name on the list.
Yeah, yeah. I can't, I mean, I think you, you've made. Our to-do list longer, but that's okay, um, but I think you've made good progress just for us, knowing that, you know, there's dialogue and. How to move forward.
In that regard, then, um, I was. I didn't four, which is operating on water levels, is that, is that gonna be addressed in that, the guy in this longer term planning, if it's gonna be addressed by this policy or?
I mean, I would say that pretty much. Everything would. That sort of joint decision-making framework process, it's been all fits into that.
But in the meantime, I'm sorry, I didn't see. In the meantime, what are the rules? What is the agreement we come together on today, if we need? You know, i- if Lincolnville needs us to do something with opening the gates or closing the gates, or whatever it is, what are, what are the operating rules? That are kind of interim, are we using the?
Every time, excuse me, every time I receive an email. About lake levels, usually I'm copied in something that they're sending out to Audrey or David.
Right.
Um, I say, based on the last policy that was adopted by the Camden Select Board. You know, we're supposed to be between, you know, twenty to twenty-five inches below the spillway, and then.
And we are right now.
This year is a perfect example of it, so we, you know, we follow the, the operating guidelines from two thousand nine, and did the drawdown, was it like? A week or two weeks before the Halloween storm.
It would, yeah, roughly two weeks, we were getting an air for the, the lake was way too low.
Too low, and then we had a Halloween storm, and thankfully, we had done the drawdown.
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess that's.
Because by the end of that, people were complaining it was too high.
Yeah, it mean. Lacking anything new or different. Um, I'm always gonna default, the fall back to the policy that was last step, and I think that it's worked.
Yeah.
Now, it hasn't, it, it certainly doesn't make everybody happy all the time, but it, it can.
No.
Nothing, nothing does.
Right.
So.
So, until there's something better, it's.
Right.
His own call, his, what we're doing, why.
So, to the points that everybody's coming to make, I think, um, Audra and David both mentioned. Drafting a list of questions that help our respective boards. Identify what our priorities are around this conversation, and around. This entity, whether we want to call it the watershed, or the dams, or, you know, the name that we choose to give it. Um, and so I would encourage our, our board. Whether it's the next agenda or. Soon, soon agenda, to have this, um, as a conversation where our respective boards. Flesh out what our equivalent priorities are around this, and that hopefully. Whether it's tonight, or in that same time period. We're able to then come back to the table and have a clearer idea of. What our priorities are, and where they fall in the hierarchy, and how to afford them short-term and long-term.
Nicely stated. Put that in the minute, somebody.
That makes a lot of sense, do you have other comments?
Yeah, I do have a question, does anybody around here see, uh, we are entering, or if not in budget season right now? Does anybody, um, around here see, I'll take it, you, you two, a, any urgency? In decision-making, because we are entering the budget season right now, you talk about repairs being needed.
Yes, yeah, so there's no, we, we have no sort of, um. You know, immediate, large capital expenditures for FY twenty-three, for the lake dams.
But it looks like FY twenty-four, there is one, so maybe it would be good for us to know, so that. We need to parcel this out over the course of two years, rather than hitting our budget up for the full amount at one time, you know.
Are you talking about a six-figure number?
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, well, well said, we'd like to plan i- i- if, if we know things are coming.
Do reserve.
Yeah, and that get back, gets back to our own, you know, priority or internal policy around this, whether we. Annually allocate a flat sum, so that we don't get caught. Correct, and so if we can. Get back to the point where we have that joint policy conversation, and have that both micro and macro.
Yeah.
Picture in the back of our heads as decision-makers, we can. Well, I mean, really, all we have is, you know, what's in the spreadsheet. There, I mean, there's. A lot of different things that we need to consider, so I would say that this is just. To give us a high-level understanding of what's needed and what's necessary, but it's kind of, it's. Definitely subject to change based on our discussion about.
It's, it's just an initial, uh, initial summary, it could, absolutely could change, but that's, it summarizes for these, the west, which are interested, obviously. But that spreadsheet is in the back there, so, but that's, you still believe that's gonna be twenty-four, not twenty-three.
Yeah, it definitely, definitely not twenty-three, um, but I do have to look at the, um, NEMA report, just to see how. How much, I guess, stiff army have we been doing for a while to stay off? What they're, what they're requiring of us versus, um, you know, what is more negotiable in terms of. You know, giving us more time to do this planning and allow you folks to decide how you might wanna. Handle it from your side.
And not to drag this out longer, but just where these estimates, as we know, the cost of everything is going up. You know, there's that hundred thousand dollar figure, has that been subject to inflationary forces, you know, I was.
Oh, and I, I would say that with all of this, it's just so difficult, because you'll get, you know, you'll get an estimate, and then it's. It's good for maybe two months.
They're more than likely will exceed.
Although, there's a good, I'm sorry. There's, you know, if it's, if some of these repairs can be combined with a larger. Project that improves something habitat-wise, or there's a. You know, there's also the opportunity for the cost to go down, but it's only if we can get out. Ahead enough and say, okay, we're doing this, because it's gonna allow. Brook trout to be able to get, you know, back and forth, or, um, and that's where I think having Lincolnville more involved. Would be just really beneficial to. Right, there isn't funding available just to help us solve our lake level problems and fix our dam, but when it's like, we're doing this to reduce the risk of flooding. And to allow the passage of these four threatened species, um, you know, all of a sudden, then we're gonna have a little kayak. Passage around the side, it all of a sudden allows you to check up all those boxes, they're now saying that, um. There's a lot of federal funding available without match now, um, so, we're entering into a phase where there's.
Right now, in terms of, uh, in terms of availability and funding, it's really, really very large. So we, I guess your question is, it's not exact, um, and especially comes to construction today, I wouldn't play on this.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry if this is off agenda, but, so I look at that hundred thousand, and I just want, what? Can we be privy to what numbers are feeding those? Is that, is that an ongoing quote that you have with contractors? Or just, I, I lack the understanding. Yes, my guesses, and this is, this is me speculating, which I probably shouldn't do, but, um, you know, when, uh, you know. The, we get the inspection reports from the engineers, we'll also go to them and say, hey, how. Okay. I mean, I would, I think, using engineer to do your cost estimates is always.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have to tell you. You know how wrought that is.
Yeah. That, those numbers are extra special.
So anyway, okay, yeah, take these numbers with the extra special brain assault.
Okay.
Engineers are hundred percent lower, or hundred percent higher.
And those, I mean, those inspection reports are, um. Something, I don't know if they're on the website, or not, but they're all digitized, you can look at them, and, um. They want, you know, one of the things that they say every year, that, that I don't think we have done, is that we should do. Um, as assessment of whether they can pass a hundred-year storm or not, I know, I was reading over that the other day, and I was like. Whoa, they're like, we, we're recommending once again that you answer this question, and I was like, oh my gosh, we haven't done that, you know? Why is it that we haven't done that? Is it a cost thing? Is it? Um, so there might be things that are not. You know, I think Dave Bosworth has tried very hard to keep the costs at, um, sort of the, the bare minimum. Um, but there might be, you know, recommendations as sort of a best practice type of thing that would go above and beyond these two.
It encompasses actually, this, this approach, approaches. Encompasses all five items in the jet, you know, they all, they are all against the link, they're not separate. And the, they're all connected by the link.
Not common part, but there's. It, not now, there's some, actually, there's some debate as to whether, like, historically, there was a.
We got a road in the way now.
Yeah.
It's a road in the way.
Oh, yeah, it's not that big, but it's to pull you over.
Yeah. But, uh.
It's an interesting thing, somebody said the other day, well, why don't you want to get all lives up into my Bennett Lake, why don't you just restore the connection between Coleman Pond? I was like, oh, I, I don't know, um. Conversation.
The part, the, it's not a dam now, but the structure that impounds the water to Coleman Pond.
Yeah.
The McGonagall Lake would probably flow the other way.
Right, or we, it would lower the level of Coleman Pond, potentially, we wouldn't want all the water from Coleman Pond to come down.
We'd have the, the impound.
Oh, we'll just send our water to you, and then we have too much.
There you go.
Anything else?
What's the timeline to put this, this? The timeline to put the structure together? No, but Russia, I mean, are we talking like?
March, March, February, March is difficult for all of us, so we probably don't wanna commit ourselves to anything. In the next two months.
So, most budget leads.
Yeah, this is gonna be.
But can we zoom from, yeah. I always like having a deadline. Makes me do things, I actually, me too, but I'm scared to.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm just, just trying to understand, you know, what's, what's.
Processes sooner now, because of issues, and, you know, and, and that kills March and part of April. Then warrants and blah, 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 all this stuff.
Maybe, maybe we need to get back to you, how's that sound?
We get, we get them by on that, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
We have to be realistic.
Right. We're definitely into buried season.
Okay, when is your budget cycle starting in March?
Yeah, well, uh. In theory. Actuality, the selectmen are gonna see the first draft next week.
Yeah. Oh, wow. Before your budget committee.
Yeah, we do it, we do it, selecting first, then it goes to the budget committee.
There's a lot to be said for that.
Well, when you're. You know, it's not a manager's budget either. It's their budget, it's not mine. I just compile everybody's requests and give some guidance, and then they.
And then your budget committee meets and then brings direct recommendations to the board?
Typically, up until this year, um. We had so, the selectmen sit with the department heads and committee chairs and everybody else, listens to all the requests. And they've invited the budget committee to listen and participate or question, uh, just so we can avoid some duplication of meetings. Um, this shit's gonna be a little different, because we don't have a huge meeting room, but we can make that available, but, um. And then the selectmen, after they've heard it all, then they work their magic to add and subtract. And then ultimately, their recommendations get incorporated into the budget. And then the budget goes back to the budget committee again, and then they act on what the selectmen have recommended, come up with their own recommendation.
Interesting.
Would it be, I tend to agree with Sophie that, uh, having a deadline, even if. The announcement is that we haven't gotten anywhere, would our first meeting in May? Be too much for respectively, the two boards to have a check-in with our administrator manager to. See if we've gotten anywhere in the process, or at least have a conversation that can just. Kind of keep the fuel tank topped off.
And maybe that would be a good time for us to state whether we have any question, or whether, or have any.
Very good.
Kind of red questions.
Just so it doesn't get pushed off.
Early May, yeah, yeah.
The first, they're saying their first meeting.
That hopefully, we can have at least a preliminary idea of, from our administrator manager. Um, questions and beginning to set priorities, I don't imagine that in one select board meeting, either one of us are gonna be able to really. Nail these down, so at least, setting that goal for ourselves to have something to. Start bringing.
Yep.
I, yeah, I mean.
Audrey says yes, like Dave says yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, it's, add to voting and all of that, but, you know.
We could do a second visit too, that would be fun, would be nice, Sophie.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Are you proposing to do an outline of the stuff with the first?
Yeah, I'll let you know tomorrow after I sleep on that, but, uh. Yeah, I mean, it, in all likelihood, we're gonna have to work to make the skeleton of the skeleton before we get.
Absolutely.
Far.
Right, and like lately said, having the, you know, sort of list of questions.
Yeah.
That we're asking of you to help us.
Yeah, I think that's.
Populate it, that's gonna be, I think that's even more important than, you know, the skeleton of the skeleton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe having those questions by that first meeting in May, would be a good thing, and then. Then they take those back and.
I mean, with the all-due municipal speed that we all work with, right?
We didn't say many this year.
That, you know, if, if we can be having some, even the first, the one point O draft version of this structure in a year.
Yes.
I think will be a noble effort.
Yeah.
And yet, it will, the value for our voters will be huge. So.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Well.
What else?
That's right.
Well, I mean, I think as long as we're not expecting, hey, March, March meeting. Not a Wednesday, when you don't have a budget meeting versus. Make co-sold waste meeting. New committee meeting.
Busy, busy, busy people, make things happen. When you're busy, you make things happen, you go, um.
Right, it depends, like, you sometimes, it would make this happen, and then people vote on it, and then you're like locked into this thing. Like, I hear in our local agreement sometimes, and I'm like, whoa, make co-sold waste, and it's like the things that we. Are in there that can't be changed, you know, it's, it does take some, I appreciate David saying, oh, I, I'll let you know once I. Sleep on it and think about it, and like ruminating over, okay, well, what really does make the most sense in terms of a structure?
What's fit for purpose? What is fit for the purpose?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we don't need to create. A committee for the sake of. A committee for the sake of creating a committee, we really need to manage this resource together, and so what is fit for the purpose of management?
Yeah, it is, and it's year four, at least they modify, at least they modify it, so we have to keep looking at the process.
That's usually the worst reason to do anything I've found in my life, just because it's always been done this way.
Yes.
That's, well, I don't know that much.
But it's easy to fall in that trap. Well, thank you all for coming out with this warm evening.
Thanks for having us, it's a great, great beginning of the conversation.
Apologize that there's generations of scheduling, uh we have.
Over the past two and a half years. Holy, we made it happen, even on a less than beautiful weather night.
It's like herding cats, isn't it?
Always, always.
It was hard enough to get one board together.
Oh, gosh. One time works for everyone.
Get it. We need to.
Well, we're we're still in public, we're we're in a public meeting, so.
I will make a motion.
Second?
I will second you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're not so far away.
Impressed the way that you video uh get these out to the public, very impressive.
Well, it'll be interesting if we watch it on YouTube later and see just how, I mean.
A little unnerving. I was like, is this what my wife sees every night and now I have all the respect.
Is this how I live on Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does seem to work pretty well.
It probably is, yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting. Yep.